So I am going to call the meeting together to order. This is the virtual public hearing on the budget and appropriations ordinance. Susan, can you take the role, please?
Let's see, Carolyn, Karen, Carolyn.
Here.
Diane.
Here.
Patty, I don't see. Linda.
Here.
Tim.
Here.
And Sue gave previous notice.
Right. All right, so we are going to, I'm going to share my screen. And I am going to try to get this flag up. And we are going to have the pledge of allegiance. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I did it tonight.
Yeah, I did it, I know. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag of the United States of America.
To the republic.
For which it stands.
One nation.
One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you so much. All right, keep that up for the next meeting. Back here, wait. All right, the purpose of this meeting is a public hearing to allow the public an opportunity to address the board regarding the 2020-2021 budget and appropriations. Susan, do we have any participants who would like to address the public board on this?
I just received a comment from Mr. McCula, so I'm printing that up. I don't see any hands up for the rest of the residents, but maybe they don't know that they're supposed to do that. Probably, yeah. Okay, Joseph McCula says, "With the low number of items being checked out and no prospects of a quick rebound, and with the present workforce and overhead, the cost per item being checked out is certainly over $100 each. As the pandemic subsides, who knows how many people will use the library? Many have found alternatives, such as purchasing books online, ebooks and tablets, et cetera. Many certainly will not come back, witnessed by very low volume of use currently. The library should contact the 1,000 regular patrons out of 58,000 in the district and see if they plan to come back. Taxpayer subsidization on this scale is not justified or fair. The new normal will certainly greatly reduce circulation. Also, fewer persons will participate in programs. Downsizing of staff will have to happen because of reduced and uncertain circulation, and programs have to be drastically cut or eliminated. This downsizing requires the trustees to cut the budget drastically and dip into their massive surplus, so they can then cut the tax levy." That is the only written comment I have received. I still don't see any hands up, so.
All right, then, thank you, Mr. McCula, and that concludes this public hearing on the budget appropriations ordinance. I make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
Thank you. Carolyn seconded it. Susan, can I have a roll call, please?
Carolyn?
Yes.
Carolyn, Diane?
Yes.
Yes, no comment, thank you.
Okay, Tim?
Yes.
Okay. Meeting is adjourned.
All right, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned, we will proceed on to our next meeting.
You in a second, I hope.
Oh, now we leave?
We do have a quorum, and I think we can start the regular board meeting, the July 15, 2020.
What I know last, and it's just an easy way to give back to your community and keep our public library going well.
Oh, Linda, you're not on mute. Okay, all right. So Susan, could you call the roll order, roll call, please?
Okay, Karen?
Karen's on mute. Give her a thumb up, maybe? Karen's here.
Carolyn?
Here.
Diane?
Here.
No Patty. Linda?
Here.
Tim?
Here.
And Sue gave previous notice.
Great. All right, we are going to do the pledge of allegiance again, although you were not at the previous meeting. I'm going to share my screen again if you want.
Oh, you have to do the sharing, I can unshare it. But I don't, I don't have access to your computer, so I cannot do that.
Well, when I click on share screen, it says host disabled attendees.
Oh, okay, sorry, sorry, let me fix that.
So, I normally believe you, Susan, but in this case.
Okay, I'm going to mute myself because Patty's on the phone.
All right. All right, here we go. Back to here, can y'all see that?
No.
No, oh, no?
I see you.
Oh, I gotta hit chat.
Yes.
Yes, I see it, very nice.
All right, stand for the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. All right, sharing has stopped, wonderful. Okay, so now we have approval amendments. So I make a motion to approve the minutes, I'm sorry, the minutes of the virtual regular board meeting of June 17, 2020. And I have a second. People are muted, Diane seconded it, she waved her hand. All right, we'll go through in order, and if anybody's got any, make a motion for any changes, you can do that. So Diane, you're first up on this. And you are muted, no, no changes, all right. Carolyn?
Yes, I do have one on page, page three, Director's Report, paragraph seven.
Four, five, six, all right.
Sorry, I'm looking for the terminology, I believe it's a motion to amend. That's not my statement, actually, I just wanted to amend it to what I said. What I did say, I'll read, if that helps. "Trusty Durblek questioned safety concerns for staff and patrons returning to the building since the library has not received any documentation confirming it's safe to do so. She requested a document from RALs to the Niles Main Library confirming it is safe to do so." That's what I said.
We have a second, and Carolyn's motion. I'm not seeing one. Sorry, Carolyn, the board is not accepting your change on it.
Okay, can you remove that, because I didn't say that? You can't put it in there, I never said any of that.
Well, I don't think it's in quotes.
"Trusty Durblek mentioned," I think that's good enough. So I'd like it removed, because that's, I would have never said that. And I didn't. So it's going to have to be removed, you can't say.
Well, it actually can't be removed unless there's a motion to amend the minutes.
Okay, you can't falsify the minutes.
All right, make a motion to remove.
You're trying to falsify the minutes, Carolyn.
Carolyn has it, Carolyn, make a motion to remove it, please.
"I motion to remove the inaccurate statement by trustee, of trustee Durblek."
And that's the second.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay.
The entire statement, you want it removed?
Yeah, I didn't say any of that.
That's fine. Can I have a roll call on that? Susan?
Yeah.
Carolyn?
Karen, was anyone there or no?
That was a no.
That was a no.
Okay, are we playing a game here?
There just was an internet, a lag in the internet, so it was a little garbled, you just was confirming. Carolyn, are you voting yes on this? I assume.
I'm voting yes.
On your motion, right. Diane?
I, I abstain, I'm not clear on any of this. Well, it says the same thing.
I'm sorry, can you state what we're voting on again? I'm sorry.
I'm asking to remove the, the statement by trustee Durblek, because I didn't say any of that. So they won't change what I said. Thank you so much.
Okay, Tim?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. We missed the public comment, didn't we? Or is that, okay, never mind, sorry, it's after this.
Public comment comes after the.
I'm not good at being Diane and me. It's a bad thing.
Don't screw me up here. Don't screw me up. All right, anybody, Carolyn, are you finished with your changes for the minutes?
Yes, I am, thank you.
You're very welcome. Karen, do you have anything? No, Linda, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
All right, so we're going to, we're making, amending the motion to approve the amended minutes of the regular board meeting, virtual board meeting of June 17, 2020. You're muted, Karen.
Sorry, yes.
Carolyn?
I'm sorry, I missed it, what are we voting on?
We're voting on to approve the amended minutes.
All right, thank you, yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Great. All right, now we're entering into our public comment period. Again, I wanted to remind everyone that public comments are limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. This is an opportunity for the public to make a comment, this is not a time for questions and answers, nor an open debate. Members of the board or executive staff may elect to make a brief statement of clarification. All right, do we have any public comment?
We have two written comments. The first one is from Mackie Jones. It says, "I love Niles, I love the library, I want to love how the board votes on things tonight." Thank you. That's it.
You're welcome, thank you.
And I have a quote from Mr. Yassel, a comment from Mr. Yassel. "Good evening, library, board and staff. Monday's meeting was very informative. I would like to mention that since Greg said the ceiling leak might not be connected to a leaking roof, perhaps we can simply find the source of that specific leak for the time being and not jump the gun on going forward with a full roof replacement. On the agenda for tonight's meeting, under number nine of new business, part B, it says for a 3.3% increase for the executive director's salary beginning July 1, 2020, which is two weeks ago. According to public information of Director Lemke's 2018 salary of $132,790, that is a $4,382.07 increase, equivalent or higher than what Niles Mayor Andrew Chabillo gave himself as a pay increase not long ago. I hope to hear good reasoning for this agenda item from the trustees. Thank you for your time, as always."
Okay, thank you, Steve.
And then I see that Tisha Dowdy Ashcroft has her hand up.
Susan? Greg has his hand up real quick.
Yeah, before we move on to Tisha's public comment, I just want to address something that Mr. Yassel stated. I did not state that we did have a leak in the ceiling. What I did say is that we are getting water into the insulation on the roof that has not materialized as a leak in the interior of the building. So what, you know, I know it may be a fine point, but I want everybody to know that we do not have any active leaks into the interior of the building at this point in time. And that's what, that's all I want to say.
Thank you, Greg. The next public comment? Did we lose Susan?
Okay, I was muted, and I also, and Tisha is also muted. Okay, Tisha can now speak. And he's not letting me unmute her now.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Excellent, okay. Tisha Dowdy Ashcroft, a longtime Niles resident, "Please get out of your magic bubble and read the room, there's a pandemic going on, please, people are broke due to businesses closing, wages being cut, and furloughs, et cetera. The Park District and the Village have furloughed full and part-time employees and have put a freeze on raises for administrators. The library directors' pay raise will be on the backs of the taxpayers. Thank you."
Thank you. Any further public comments?
No, no more.
Nope, great. All right, the next item on the agenda is the president, I'm sorry, trustee reports.
Wait, can, can I say something too, to address what Tricia just said?
Yes.
We all got our tax bills, and if you notice, library line item, we have given a million-dollar abatement to the whole district. So I wish you would look at your tax statement and see it's quite a bit of money that is being given back to you from the library.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, the next.
Tim, I do have one more person has their hand up, someone named Laura.
Okay, hello, Laura.
Hi, just want to let you know I'm here as a Niles-intrusted citizen. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Laura.
Glad you're here.
All right. I think we're done with public comments. The next item on our agenda, our trustee reports, kind of going back to that. Not, not much from my end, though I did want to mention that I have embraced overdrive and digital downloading during this time, and on my Kindle, and I never thought I'd move away from physical books, but I am enjoying it, and hopefully, once the library fully opens and we can get our materials back, where I can go back to regular books, but yes, the digital download has, has worked for me. Does anybody else want to make a comment at all? This is a time, as we had, yes, Karen?
I just want to join in that. I don't really like reading books digitally, but it's at least a way to get books, so I'm glad we have that option. I'm looking forward to going back to regular books, but in the meantime, I have, through the library's help, been able to use Hoopla, a lot of technical problems to begin with, and Overdrive I'm now using, still have some technical problems, but any event, it's a good fallback if you, when you can't get the actual books. But actually, I have a quick question for Susan Lemke. So can, I've gotten some notices that I have books that are coming in, would those now be available in the section where we can pick up books?
Yes.
Since the library's open as of today?
Yep.
Excellent, thank you very much. So we don't have to make appointments to go in anymore to pick up books, is that correct?
No, yeah, it's, just you have to come between the, the correct hours, is all.
Right, that's, that's great, thank you very much.
Any other trustee want to make any statements? No, wonderful. We don't have Patty. Greg, are you giving us a brief treasures report, or are we skipping that?
Certainly.
I'm sorry, Linda?
You know, I'm sorry to interrupt, but Patty's trying to get on, I just want to let you know she's having a problem.
Oh, okay.
I'm going to try to get her in, if she comes in as a, not a trustee, please let her in the meeting.
Yeah, yeah, I'm happy to do that.
Since that's the case, do you want to wait?
Yeah, we can go back to that one.
Two minutes, yeah.
Let us move on to the payment of bills. So I make a motion to approve the operating expenses of $295,131.32, payroll expenses of $280,874.10, special reserve expenses of $2,578, for a total monthly expense of Do I have a second?
Second.
Karen seconded, great. We have any comments on this motion? We can start with Diane.
No comments.
No comments, Carolyn?
No questions, no, thank you.
All right, there you go. Karen?
No.
Nope, Linda?
No.
All right. Okay, I don't have any comments on this either, so Susan, you can take role, please.
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
No.
Hold on, hold on. Diane?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
All right, motion passes.
Do we get Karen?
Yeah, she was first.
Oh, she was, okay, thanks. So I'm seeing Laura still on our screen, is she?
I can't get rid of people once they have had the chance to talk.
Oh, all right.
Does it matter?
No, it does, I was just wondering.
I just, oh, okay.
Yeah, I did.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking.
Susan, it's Linda.
Yeah.
Could you do me a favor, could you just send Patty the link again?
I don't, I don't think I can, I can't.
I know I can't get out either to send it, okay? All right, I'm trying.
I'll try, I'll see if I can edit, but yeah, it used to let me edit during a meeting, and now it has stopped letting me do that, so it's just making it a lot harder. She just needs to go to our website and use the public link.
So we can't shrink this screen and go into something else?
I'm going to log out and then get the link to Patty.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Linda.
I have to log out.
Yeah, can't you shrink the screen and go into?
Yeah, you should just be able to go over to your Chrome and open up.
Yeah, right. Oh, yeah, see, yeah.
You don't have to get out of the meeting.
You don't need to hang out or shut out.
Well, she, I mean, she was in, she's in her email, but she wasn't finding the link. I used to be able to go and edit the panelists and be able to resend links during the meetings, and it won't let me do that anymore. They've made some modifications to Zoom, and it has stopped doing that now, so.
Great upgrades.
Well, I feel for Patty. Okay, so we did that, okay, so Susan, next item is our director's report.
Okay, I have to remember to be Susan instead of Diane for a minute. I just wanted to let you know that in the trustee, in the trustee calendar, I am missing an item, which is the Chamber of Commerce 2020 golf outing. And so I believe, my understanding is that the golf part is, they actually are playing real golf, in person, on a golf course, on August 18th. But the lunch is a virtual, a virtual, the, there are boxed lunches with, for the golfers, and then the dinner is a virtual awards dinner. So, a $30 Niles Chamber gift card to purchase dinner, so that you can attend the virtual awards and the raffle, so.
And that's on page 35, is our calendar, I believe.
Yep, so just for August 18th, that is another thing. So, missed that, and I wanted you to know, I did also hear from Alicia that the Niles Night of Roses will also be virtual, that they had moved it to, I think it's October, and it's going to be a virtual event as well, because there's no way to do it with the 15-person cap.
Sure.
So I just wanted to let you know that we did start letting patrons into the building, we've been doing it since June for the technology appointments, but now people can come in and pick out materials, use the self-checks, pick up their holds for themselves. And then we also continued the no-contact holds pickup for people that don't want to come in the building. And, you know, some people were pretty tentative about coming back in the building, so that is continuing, they appreciate that. So we had to rearrange everything, took a lot of staff effort, there are many staff members that I could shout out to at this point, but I'd missed some, and that would be sad, but, but just a great effort went into making us ready for letting the patrons in the building. They, I did the first greeting slot this morning, and they seemed very appreciative, I didn't see a single person without a mask. I think they're a little confused by the fact that we close every 45 minutes to clean. And it's, it's an awkward schedule, but it does keep us from having a person plop down at the beginning of the day and stay the whole day, which is what we're trying. If they had come in, you don't want them in the building for that long. So, but I think it went very smoothly, the staff all sounded like they were pretty happy with it, that they have done lots of displays, like in children's, there are these lawn tables that have stacks of books on them that are different, different genres, or like, you know, elephant and piggy books for the readers, or, you know, just different things that somebody could come along and just grab, you know, without having to really browse a lot. There is Patty.
There she is, hi Patty. So Susan, can I ask you?
Yes.
How do you, how do you get rid of the people after 45 minutes? I don't understand.
Well, the rich, I understand, was here till 2:00 in the morning, or maybe he was working from home, but I think, but I think he was actually physically here, getting a series of announcements put up. Athena, for the head of patron services, recorded a bunch of announcements, and so they just run, you know, like every 10 minutes, it's reminding people to keep their mask up, because a lot of people kind of start out with a mask, and then it gets a little uncomfortable, and then they kind of let, start letting it slide, so, but people were so far fine, so it talks about that, and then it starts sort of warning them that the library's going to be closing in 15 minutes, and so go and keep your stuff to the self-check. So I think, you know, I always like having that warm, personal approach of letting people talk to a real person to check out, if that's what they prefer, and of course, lots of people really like that, but originally, those self-checks were put in, you know, and the whole automated materials handling was put in, partly so that people could do their own checking out, so we are now able to kind of at least fall back on that. And they seem to be having a lot of success with it, especially because you went fine-free.
Good idea.
Susan, can I just ask a question? Do you not have any, like, you don't have a location with the shield, should someone need to speak?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we do.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, anybody that had trouble could still go to the desk and get some help, but, you know, just trying to keep.
And the, and the employees.
And they have, yeah, they have these guards, they have guards at most of the desks.
Okay, great, great.
Yeah, we're not currently staffing all of the desks, so.
Oh, no, I understand, no.
Patty?
Patty, you're.
I'm sorry, I missed part of this. So how is it, how are people coming in? Do they have appointments, or, I read part of it, but I wasn't sure exactly for today, how, how does it start?
Well, we still have computer appointments or technology appointments, and the appointments are reserved for Niles residents, Niles, Niles main library cardholders, I should say. And so those, and then they have four slots for walk-ins. So the doors open like at 9:00, and we do let people come in, we have a cap of 50 people, but we did not get close to that, because people kind of were zipping in, grabbing stuff, and heading right back out, so.
So they can go to the stacks, or no?
Yeah, they can go to the stacks, they also just, just went and picked up their holds. Yeah, yeah, they were really happy to be back physically in the building. And I saw lots of parents and kids, and they were leaving with like big stacks of kids' books and stuff, that did my heart a lot of good, I was really happy to see that. So yeah, it's a, I think, I think, you know, I think people are very happy to be back in, and I think that we have done it cautiously enough that the staff feels secure to be able to do it, so.
Susan, that's great, you know, especially for kids, the time that we were sort of prevented from going into the library was a long time, but that seems like forever for a kid, so I really glad children, their parents are allowed back in and can load up a new children's book. I remember when my daughter was little, I got so tired of reading the same books over and over and over again, so, great.
Yep, yeah, I'm really happy about it, I mean, they were able to do the no-contact holds pickup, but that's not at all the same thing as getting to come and pick your books yourself, for an adult or for a kid. So that's been occupying most of our time, and I, but I'm really happy that it is up and running successfully. Do you have any questions for me? I'm sure there are other things, but.
Well, I did, I was going to make a comment there, congratulations on the John Cotton Award.
Oh, yeah.
That's wonderful.
For marketing?
Yes, yep.
Marketing, yeah, excellent, wow, $10,000, fantastic.
That's, yeah, that's really impressive.
What are you going to do with the money?
Well, I don't, I don't know, we have not even discussed that, we just were so excited to win the award, and we don't have.
That's wonderful.
They haven't given it to us yet.
Oh.
So there's no, there's no restrictions on this like there are in the grants we get?
No.
That's wonderful.
Whatever you guys decide you want to do.
Nice.
Yeah, I'm very, very proud of the marketing team.
I do want to.
I also wanted to mention. I also wanted to mention about Jason and his recordings. I was browsing through the internet the other day, and I just happened to come to hear him singing. He's got a wonderful voice, and it's, I was just a pleasant surprise.
Thank you. Yeah, he did that whole thing himself, all the editing, and yeah, he is remarkable. Yeah, he works in digital services, if you haven't ever met him. Very, very nice.
Yeah, I've worked.
Thank you, yeah.
Thank you, Diane.
I want to make a, a thank you out to Roberta for the planter, planting the flowers and the planters.
Great.
So thank you very much.
And they did get the planter by Stan's Memorial Bench planted this week as well.
Cool.
All right, any other comments on Susan's report?
Um, yeah, on page 32, the fact that more than 5,000 items that were ordered were received.
Yeah.
That's an awful lot of work, right?
Oh, my gosh.
Staff is not working. They are.
Yeah, they are drowning back there. They are hustling. People, really, I just see people just kind of in high gear a lot of the time, but, you know, they're getting the job done.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I think, I think technical services may need to hire some temporary help to clear the backlog, though, because they haven't started ordering since then. So what, you know, they got to get rid of that stuff so that they can start getting the new stuff coming in, so. I think, and then there are a lot of people that are looking for temporary work right now, so I think that will not be hard to do.
And can any of the other staff be temporarily assigned to there?
You know, everybody has been pitching in. All of the departments have been helping each other. So, you know, like, we've all been pulling the pick holds, we've all been shelving, and then like Diane, my Diane, and several other people have been helping out with technical services, getting books processed and things like that. But, but it's an overwhelming amount of material. And, and we're spread very thin over the four teams, so it's, they're really, it's very thin staffing right now.
Good job.
Yeah, well, good job, yes. All right, now that Patty's back here, you want to do?
I'm sorry, I really am.
Oh, don't worry about it.
We all have challenges.
We all been there.
We said inappropriate with my screen, but anything. Do you have, we passed up your treasurer's report, so we can go back to that.
That's fine, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, we're ready. Thank you.
Okay, on July 15th, June is the 12th month of the fiscal year, 100% of our way through the year, through the budget rather. The library's overall expenditures are at 73% of the total budget. Assets, investment income is 181%, replacement tax 118%, total revenues 106%, salaries at 98%, library materials 91%, total library operating expenditures 70% of the overall category is well under budget. General administration is 87% over, under, it's under budget. Employee fringe benefits is at 91%, a little under budget. Utilities 90%, which is also a little under budget. Capital expenditures at 11%, which is more than a little under budget. Building and equipment maintenance is below budget at 73%. And that's it. Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure doing business with you.
Thank you so much. Anybody have any questions for?
May I just make a, just a little note, just so you understand that the capital expenditures is all money that was not levied. I know you all understand this, but there are a number of residents here. So that, that line being underspent at 11%, that just means that that portion of the special reserve didn't get spent this year, and those costs will transfer to next year, but they don't get levied for. It's not like we're taxing people twice for something. Just wanted to be clear about that. And of course, with the, with the COVID pandemic, we just were not able to get the work done that we had hoped to do.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. So now we are moving on to number nine, new business. I'm a number, a letter A. I'm making a motion to adopt ordinance 20-04, an ordinance providing for budget and appropriations of the Niles Main District Library, Cook County, Illinois, for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2020, and ending June 30th, 2021. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second, thank you, Patty.
No problem.
Um, so per our last meeting, we did the motion so that any trustee had any specific questions, they should contact the staff in the entering meeting, inner portion of the two meetings. So hopefully, there's not a lot of questions, so we can go around the room. If anybody's got any additional comments on the budget, address that now. We can start with, let's start with Patty this time.
Do I have any questions pertaining to the budget?
Or comments?
No.
No. All right, Karen?
My questions were already answered.
All right, thank you. Linda? Linda, you're on mute? No, okay, great. Diane?
No, we had quite a discussion last time, and I think all my questions were answered. Thank you.
Great. Carolyn?
Um, yes, I had a question. I requested, let's see, how did I word this? Please provide me with the specific items and their cost that make up the budget categories which I attached. I used the Excel spreadsheet from Greg or Susan, and there's a category called downloadables for $92,400. And I asked if you could please provide the specific items and their cost under that category. So I got a request from Susan stating I said something completely different, and that according to FOIA, she can't respond. So my statement was never even entered. The sentence you used is something I never said. It seems to be happening a lot with my correspondence. So I just wanted to mention that because if you're telling us we're spending $92,000 on downloadables, and I'm asking, please identify what's within that downloadables and $92,000, it shouldn't be an unidentifiable question. I mean, the whole thing was bizarre. But I just wanted to, to make a point that there was no reason to be unable to identify what I meant. But maybe because you wrote something else down, you misread what I wrote. If you read your FOIA and look at my request, your sense is not at all what I asked for.
Carolyn, it was the attorney that took your email and quoted it in the response to you. I did not actually write that.
Which attorney wrote that? I'll call him. Which attorney wrote that?
Uh, well, our attorney is Dennis Walsh at Klein.
Okay, I'll give him a call, and I'll point it out to him and see if he could not do that in the future.
Well, that will be up to the board if they want you to do that, because that costs $200 an hour.
We've already made a decision that individual board members should.
If you paid him $200 and he misread this, it's an outrage.
Well, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. But we do not allow individual trustees to contact our lawyer.
Why?
Because that's not our procedures. Okay.
Well, who's going to contact him and let him know he made a mistake? A third party?
Hold on. Susan, would you contact the lawyer once more and just forward whatever Carolyn said?
Mike could try. I mean, I.
Well, Susan, it's a simple.
Carolyn, but you sent, you sent a spreadsheet with 22 budget categories and said, please give me the information that goes with these categories.
No, I didn't. No, no, no. This is what I said. Please provide me with the specific items and their costs that make up the budget categories attached. 22 words. Who knows what downloadables are?
All right.
So it just got, if I can clarify, Carolyn, you sent two emails. That was your first email to me. Your official FOIA request is what I forwarded to Dennis Walsh, and he quoted you exactly in your FOIA request.
So the FOIA request you're saying that I sent is different from the email I sent?
It is.
Okay, I'll, I'll have to check that. I could be wrong then.
Is the only.
I'll have to, I'll have to correct it.
Only question what downloadables are? Is that it?
No, there were 22 lines of 22 items that I needed to break down.
Yeah, well.
And I figured, since somebody created the spreadsheet, they had the information right there.
Yeah, but that, that type of request should go through the board. Carolyn, you should discuss that with the board.
Why? You don't care about the information?
All right, that's not appropriate.
Waste your time.
I have the board. I will mute everybody, okay? So we're gonna go back to our procedures where one person is talking, we stop until. So that level of detail has, was not provided to the board during budget time, or was requested by the board. So an individual trustee requesting that level of detail should really go, run through. You can roll your eyes all you want, Carolyn, but.
This is amazing.
Yes, thank you. Well, I, yes, many people think I'm amazing. So that level of detail really should go through the board to acknowledge that we agreed to have the staff create that level. That's, that's not what we've ever asked of the staff. So we don't allow individual trustees to request that level of detail from the staff. It always goes through the board. That's our procedures. It's a, it's a board decision. Trustees do not request that level of activity from individual staff.
I was told at the last board meeting to send an email with my budget question.
Absolutely.
So simple.
Your email was a level of detail. I think I responded to you. Did you get my email response to you?
So am I correct in understanding, level of detail means?
Carolyn, did you get my email response?
Yeah, it's what you're saying right now, and I'm asking you.
Additional question.
Okay, because you want to spend $98,000, and I want to know what you're spending it on, you have a problem with the level of detail? That's just common information.
You asked for all those budget items, Carolyn.
Well, there's 89 of them that aren't explained. I only wanted 22 out of 89. Just because you ramped, you just automatically vote yes, doesn't mean my request should be ignored.
All right. As I said, this is a board decision.
That's the library's process of a budget. I get it. I've been contesting this for five years. I got it.
We've gone through this. Every single time we have a budget discussion, I've, we've gone through, and I even documented to you where we've made a decision that we're okay with the current budget process.
Okay, you're okay with it. I'm not.
Well, yes, but.
I want to know what you're spending our money on.
We're done with this level of conversation.
That's fine.
Great, thank you. Patty, do you have any comments?
I was just gonna ask, is she requesting names of titles, or what is she requesting? I don't understand.
Let's.
And we're over with this subject anyway, so never mind. I'm sorry I asked it.
It's hard to explain a budget process to people who don't use a budget process.
Yes, Carolyn, we're past this topic.
No problem.
Thank you. Great. Karen, do you have anything on this? No? Linda?
No.
No, thank you. Did I miss anybody? I don't believe I did. Susan, can you take a role, please?
I can. Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Um, is this to vote on the budget?
It is voting on the motion to adopt ordinance 202004. Everything I said about that missed.
Okay, before I vote, I know if I vote, I can't talk, so can I just make a couple of comments here before I vote?
No.
Why?
Because.
I want to read a statement.
Once we call for a vote, then we are done making comments. All right?
May I please read my statement?
No.
You did make your comments when we hit the comment portion.
No, I was just asking a question. Now I would like to make a comment about the budget.
All right.
It's actually a request.
Why you have a problem with our procedures, but go ahead.
I don't understand why you have a problem with allowing all of us to speak.
You did.
Why is it a secret?
You said no. We moved on.
Pardon me? I didn't say no.
So, go ahead and make your comment.
Thank you. I just wanted to make a few points. The 2021 budget process mirrored the previous five years. An Excel spreadsheet of line items and their total spending amount was provided. No breakdown of line items detailing individual costs or analysis or justification for these items, which totaled $7,562,633 was presented. Unlike previous years, we are facing the worst health crisis and economic downturn in our lifetime. While other library boards were proactive to reevaluate and decrease current costs and operations, the Niles Main Library trustees refused to do anything. Board approvals for health insurance occurred by trustees without seeing the actual bid. No competitive bids were received. In addition to receiving competitive bids, our goal should be healthcare reform. Our expectation should be solutions provided to us for healthcare coverage and costs. Staff spent several months selectively soliciting envelope consultants for yet another roof replacement inspection and roof enhancements. The library should publicly bid for proposals. During a pandemic and the indefinite future of the library, envelope consultants is not a necessity. Again, this reflects a lack of board oversight. The board's lack of oversight has created a breakdown in protocol and a lack of trust and integrity in our decisions by our constituents. "We are all in this together" is a slogan of the library. We are not all equally in this together. Many residents are out of work, unable to meet mortgage payments, suffering physically from COVID-19, or struggling emotionally because of their dire situations. I would like to make one last plea for the trustees to reconsider a freeze on hiring and capital asset projects for the coming year. In addition to offset salary increases and merit raises, please consider eliminating memberships, professional development, and travel for staff in 202021. Thank you. That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Carolyn.
Yeah, we don't appreciate it.
Uh, no, we're, we're, we're at the vote. Problem. We're at the vote.
We're at the vote, but she's not.
I understand. I let her go.
Because you're too nice to her.
Because I can't control anybody.
That was.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
And I, I understand. Put it on me. It's all on me. So, so since I made this allowance for Carolyn, I'll make it for everybody else. Anybody else have another comment before they take their vote? Yes, Patty?
Yes. Several of the things she mentioned, we have discussed. So I'm not really agreeing with her statement. And our budget was lower than it was. We lowered it. So, you know, it's not like we went with the same budget we had last year. So if you want to criticize us, go right ahead, dear, because at least we're not grandstanders like you.
All right. Thank you. All right, anybody else want to make a statement before?
I just want to negate everything that she said, and I can't go through it all, because it's too much.
All right. Thank you very much. All right.
And I, too, have had enough of the grandstanding and putting down.
I'm not grandstanding. I'm standing clear.
Putting down the rest of the board when it's just unjustifiable. We all work hard, and we look through things diligently, and that's all I have to say. Thank you very much, Carolyn, for your unwarranted conversation and everything else that you just had to say against us.
All right. All right. Thank you very much. Karen, you want to join in?
Yeah, we do discuss these things. We spend a lot of time on them. And then Carolyn, I do believe, I know you're playing to the audience out here, telling everyone how thorough you are and other people aren't, but it's just not true. And, you know, again, I know you're playing to the crowd out there, but it's just not true.
All right.
I'd like to respond, please.
No.
I do not, no. You cannot accuse me of playing to the crowd.
Oh, no. Do accuse us.
Mute everybody, please. Me. We are going. Me. We are going to continue on with our, Carolyn, you've been muted, so you might as well stop. Our, we're, we're done with discussion on this. We're going to our, our vote. Susan, would you please restart the vote? I don't know, even know where we left off.
Okay, Karen?
Karen's muted.
Oh yeah, everybody's muted.
Okay. Would you mind reading what we, where we left off with this? Because it's been such a while.
Adopting ordinance 200
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay, for the
Yes. I vote yes.
Carolyn?
Carolyn said no.
Diane?
I vote yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Next item, 9B. I make a motion to approve a 3.3% increase in salary for Executive Director Susan Lemke for the year 2020 slash 2021, beginning July 1st, 2020. Do I have a second on this one?
Second.
Thank you. So, um, I did want to state that Susan hasn't had a, a, a commensurate with the rest of the staff for a number of years now. Also, um, you know, in my opinion, he has just done an absolutely outstanding job running this library through this past several months with pandemic challenges that have never arisen before with libraries. And she has risen to the level of, of exceptionality. And I'm very proud to, to be on this board with her, and I'm very proud of her work. I'm very proud of the work of the, the rest of the staff as well. So this is a, um, we had approved the 3.3% raise for the entire staff, and this is just including Susan with that, that raise. And then for the record, for everybody attending, we have decreased our overall budget. We're in the area of $600,000. So that overall decrease was also due to Susan's extensive work on identifying the areas that we can lessen expenses. So, you know, for everybody who's, who's crying that we're spending a lot of money, we are reducing the budget by quite a bit. All right, um, next, Diane, you want to make a comment on this?
Uh, no, I agree with the increase in salary for Susan. She's done a wonderful job and, and I approve this item.
Thank you. Carolyn? Want to make a comment on this one? Uh, Carolyn, you are muted. Somebody unmute Carolyn, please. Carolyn's still muted. Carolyn, stop talking. You're muted.
I know. I gotta get to the button. Okay, no, I don't have a comment. I would like to make a friendly amendment, but that'll be after the vote, I assume. Correct?
No, you gotta have to make the amendment before the vote, because we vote on it, and it's finished, then you can't amend the motion.
Okay. All right, um, can, well, can I make a motion when everybody's done commenting? Okay, thank you.
Uh, sure. Sure. Karen?
Uh, yes, um, I, I would like to advocate for this. It's in line with the other staff member increases. And I, I note that this, and this includes the cost of living increase. I mean, some employers give a cost of living increase, and then they give a separate merit increase, but this includes any cost of living increase. The cost of living in, uh, this past year, I don't know, Greg, could you remind us what it was? I don't know if you know that offhand. We did consider that.
Greg, you're, yeah. You're unmuted, Greg.
Uh, yeah, uh, cost of living was 1.9%?
Okay, so that
Uh, no, I'm sorry. That was, that was the previous year. 2.3%.
You know, that's what I thought. That's where I thought where we came up with the 3.3%. So it's really, she's only getting a 1% increase. Uh, that's merit-based. It's only 1% more than she would otherwise make. Um, you know, I noticed that, you know, all of our residents who maybe are receiving social security, they get a cost of living increase. So I think that our employees are entitled to an increase also. Um, that is at a minimum what the cost of living is. So I have no further comment on that, other than to say that I do think Susan's done a great job this year and has worked, I'm sure, an extraordinary number of hours, given the demands that the pandemic put on her and all of her staff members too, for that matter. I, I know a lot of decisions had to be made very carefully. And in times like this, there's a lot of criticism that's levied against a person, no matter what decision they make, and that's all very hard. So I just want to appreciate, I say I appreciate her work during the past months. I'm, I'm done, Tim.
Thank you. We're gonna go around everybody's comment, then you wanted to make a
I, I wanted to make a comment. I wanted to respond to what Karen just said.
Why, why don't we go through everybody in order?
No, go right ahead. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Uh, Linda?
Um, yes, I just want to thank Susan for empathy, compassion, knowledge, and going the extra mile through this COVID epidemic, um, through the Black Lives Matter, making statement to the community. And this has been a really pressing time in many different ways. However, every day brings surprises, and, uh, yes, she worked hard to provide consistency to our staff and our community. So I thank you.
Okay, Patty?
I also appreciate everything Susan's doing and how she's stood up to the plate. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Carolyn, did you want to, uh, something additional?
Oh, um, yes, um, Susan has absolutely done an incredible job. This is a horrible year, and at least keep smiling at every board meeting, and I appreciate all you've done. Of course, I have a completely different look at finances, but it's not a reflection on you and, and how well you work with your staff and the patrons. I did have a comment. Karen, you mentioned that, um, our staff is entitled to a raise since even the seniors get a cost of living raise. Seniors on, are on a very, very fixed income. They may get a cost of living raise. Their insurance and medical and, or their insurance costs and their prescription costs are through the roof. So they may get a little coal raise, and they probably won't get one this year because the government's gonna freeze them. But I don't think that's a good example, because our seniors are really struggling and get calls all the time. They, there aren't enough food banks that support them. So I don't think that's a good correlation a working staff member to a retired person. Just wanted to clarify that.
All right. Karen, did you want to respond on that one?
Uh, other than I think it is, it is a good example. I mean, a lot of employees don't get, uh, the raises that seniors have consistently gotten. And yeah, prices go up, but working people, their prices go up too. So in any event, I, I don't want to belabor that. I, I just really want to say that I support the motion.
All right, thank you. Carolyn, did you want to make a, a
Friendly, um, yes, please.
Sure.
I would like to make a, oh, is it, is it my turn?
It is your turn.
Okay, I would like to make a friendly amendment. I motion to recommend the trustees initiate the directors' goals and provide a formal evaluation process with collaboration for next year.
Um, so you want to change?
It has nothing to do with the raise. I just want to do this in addition.
You want to add that to the addition of the wording of this?
Right. I'm just concerned about having a more collaborative process for her evaluation and putting the responsibility on us to create her goals.
All right, uh, um, that is, uh, you know what? That's answer, okay, well, do I have a second on that?
I doubt it. Okay, no problem. I didn't think so.
All right.
Could I just say, that sounds like a, a different matter, and we may or may not support that, but it just sounds like it should be a separate motion.
I, I agree. That, that was kind of like an ancillary
Oh, okay. That's why I thought I was gonna do this after the raise, but that's okay.
All right, um, we are done. Susan, could you take a, a, a roll call on that?
I would be happy to. Karen?
Uh, yes.
Carolyn?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Thank you all very much. I appreciate your kind words, and it means a lot to me.
Well, you are very welcome. All right, so
Can I just also say, I, I am not opposed to working with the board on my goals. I, I think it should be a collaborative process, and I don't think we probably do allow enough time for that in the course of the year. So I actually agree that it could be more of a joint thing, and I'm very happy to work with you all on that.
I agree, and I have
Well, I know she is. I know Susan would be.
I know. A board meeting, um, for this topic, we really didn't work on collaborative goals. I, I actually agree with you on this, Carolyn. So I think, um, uh, we'll have to address this.
That's fine.
Does anybody remember that we already discussed this, and it's in minutes from I don't know what meeting, but I'm sure we could look back and see?
Yes.
And Carolyn was supposed to provide some initiative on creating some thoughts she had about this, and that's why nothing ever came of it.
Yeah, we will have to address it.
Well, I reconsidered that. I don't think I should tell you how to evaluate Susan. I think we should do it as a board. It's not tit for tat. It's really to have a more collaborative evaluation, because we don't. We don't interact with her enough.
I'm not opposed to it.
All right, let's, let's table that for a different discussion.
Okay, thanks. Are we at 9?
We are at, uh,
9C.
Uh, we, thank you, 9C. Okay, so, a couple of items on this. Um, and, and I want to, we've had a couple of changes. So we had, personally, I think we had a marvelous meeting last Monday on this topic. I know it was extremely long, but I think a lot of the trustees developed, uh, maybe a deeper understanding of, of what the project is all about, myself included. Uh, and I think, um, we're, maybe we're on stronger footing. Uh, Karen had made a point that we didn't, based on the proposals we had received, that we didn't, um, really have a strong handle on the costs that BEC, I believe, and Inspect would be incurring on this project. And, and I, you know, reflecting on this, we agreed with her. And I had gone back to Greg, and I asked him to, uh, ask BEC and Inspect to provide more exact costs for the various phases of the project, so that when we do review it again, uh, we will have, um, not only a minimum cost, but a maximum cost, so that we can have, um, a balance of, or, or what we're going to do. Also, Carolyn had made a point about an open bid for it, and, you know, Carolyn, I think you were right about this. Uh, we are also going to put out an announcement, a notice, a public notice, asking for, um, any further proposals from any other, um, um, consultants for this project. So
What are you proposing? We don't know what we're doing, right?
Well, Carolyn, let me finish.
Okay.
Get in there and ask me questions before I'm even done, all the time.
Well, you drop your voice. I think you're done. Go ahead.
I know. I'm sorry. I, I don't know how to not do that. Uh, okay, so in, in lieu of that, Carolyn also had a point where she said, why did we agree to having essentially a third, our, our second-party consultant run the project? And, and Carolyn, you're absolutely right. We did not make a formal motion nor a discussion over whether or not to have a, a party do that. So, uh, at this point, I would like to make a motion that for the roofing refurbishment project, we utilize a second-party consultant to do extensive analysis, uh, create specifications, um, help with the bid, and monitor the work of the selected consultants. Can I have a statement on that, then we can discuss it? Patty? All right, so I, I think we need to have a, a little bit of a discussion amongst ourselves to make sure that we're all on board with this, so that we can move forward, because Carolyn, you were right. And, uh, personally, I think that this is a good thing to have. Let, let, you know, Carolyn had said, hire a roofer. So let's go through that scenario. Let's say we do hire a roofer. You know, we get bids, and we say, you know, we need somebody come out. First of all, they'll have to do a, a forensic analysis to find out exactly what we need. So that cost or a consultant would be a wash. That, that cost is going to be, have to be done regardless. Then they'll have to create their own specification, so that, that's more or less a wash. However, let's say we find out we choose somebody, and they perform poorly, or they use material that's not, um, up to standard, or they have other issues that since the staff is not roofing experts, might not notice or see. And then down the road, we have issues clearly. Members of the public would come back to us and say, why the heck didn't you get a second party to monitor their progress so that we knew it was working the way it should be working? So I think in this case, we are doggone if we do and doggone if we don't. So I think for the protection, and it's, because it's such a large, it is a large project. I think for the protection of this project and for, uh, uh, the level of protection to ensure that it's done correctly, I think it's a great idea to go ahead and hire an expert to do the forensics analysis and then do the specification and then, uh, work with the contractor. Furthermore, I'd like to, you know, have this project, we call the Roof Refurbishment, because it is clear that it, it might not necessarily be completely replaced, and we all don't know that. We won't know that until an extensive analysis is done on this. So, um, that is my explanation for I'd like to move forward with having a, uh, a second-party, run the project for us essentially. Uh, does anybody have any comments on that motion?
For me? Okay, um, yeah, when I first heard of this, these three consulting firms, I, I really thought, this is unnecessary. We could do this ourselves. But after listening to them, I realized that they're very important to have someone like this instead of just a simple roofing contractor who might not know as much about the entire building as these consultants would help us. It's important to look at the total picture. So, um, yeah, I agree that we need to hire a consultant firm. Um, is this the time to mention, um, we also didn't have a discussion about the, uh, having a green roof or having a solar energy roof?
Uh, this is not the time to have that discussion, but we could have that again at some point. I thought maybe we would wait until we got some costs associated with those, so that we can have more informed discussion. Somehow, the members of the public seem to think that that's what we want, but it is not the case at all. There were just ideas that were floated, and we need to find out our return on investment on solar and, um, obviously widespread brand of the case for a green roof before any of that is completely discussed. So
Right, and that's why I think it's kind of important that the board makes a decision first as to yes or no, before we ask the consultant to spend time and money producing specifications and amounts of money when we, if we so decide not to even go that route.
All right, so let's, let's table that for a minute, and let's, let's make the decision on whether or not they have the consultant, and we'll go back to those two. All right, Carolyn, do you have any thoughts on my motion?
Yeah, I'm totally confused. The conversation right now is about the roof refurbishment project. That's what you're calling it?
Uh, I thought we would rename it to refurbishment, because no one knows whether or not it's to be replaced or it needs to
Oh, no, that's fine. That's fine. So actually, what you're saying is we're So actually, what you're saying is we're discussing who's going to come in and test the roof to determine where we go from here?
No, I want to make a board determination that we need a second party to run the project for us rather than going with bidding out roof consultants, roofers, the way you had suggested.
Okay, I disagree. Oh, can I talk now? I disagree that we need an envelope consultant. And the only reason I'm saying that is because I've worked for project managers. I've worked on huge. I worked on the international airport buildings when they were, when they were building them. I know exactly how all of this works. It's interesting that we would even entertain a envelope consultant. For some reason, everyone here seems to think a commercial roofing contractor consists of two men and a truck. It's not true at all. A contractor who, a roofing contractor that would work downtown that we would hire for Michigan Avenue buildings is not some little fly by night. He's extremely knowledgeable, not just about slapping on a roof, but everything else. So you're kind of, you're misunderstanding the qualifications of a commercial roofing contractor. But what you also need to know is these consultants came out and gave us three presentations and they were all terrific. Well, actually, two of them are very impressive and knowledgeable, I have to admit. But you need to find out who's actually working for them. Just because somebody's the head of the envelope consultant firm doesn't mean that everybody under him is any more knowledgeable than the person you'll call. He's going to call the same roofers you will. And if you're going to get involved with a reputable commercial roofing contractor, you're going to have all the safeties, just as if you hired an envelope consultant. But what you're doing is opening yourself to all these breakdowns of way too many processes that are going to cost the library a fortune. There are so many licensed contractors, roofing contractors, with reputations and who have worked on buildings that we can't even imagine that are just as reputable as who they're going to hire. I'm just trying to figure out why we think we need to do this. And when I, when I hear everyone, we seem to downplay the knowledge of the individuals who are really out there. I'll tell you the truth, I read Inspect's communications back and forth with Greg. I am not at all impressed with the people that will be working on his project. The project manager with Inspect was merely a roofing employee. I worked for a project manager that was the most, he was the extremely knowledgeable, the most knowledgeable person on the project. Every person, every subcontractor underneath him, he needed to know their expertise in order to be the project manager. It's not what you're getting here. And just because you're going to have an envelope consultant come out and oversee what people are doing, it's not a safety net, believe me. He's not going to be watching what everybody does. It's just a GC. It's another general contractor. I strongly would like you to consider at least getting bids from these commercial roofing contractors. I just feel like we open ourselves up to endless spending because we don't understand that you have your safety net with a lot of other, in a lot of other directions. So I'm really not for these envelope consultants, but I see the rest of you are.
We have only had three people talk so far. Karen, do you have anything to say on this motion?
You know, it is a lot of money for these envelope consultants, and I was concerned about that. When I looked at the bids, I guess I didn't, I was sort of surprised how much it would run. But I did think it was interesting to hear them say that maybe it's not a roof that we need. Maybe it's something else, or maybe we need a roof plus something else to ensure the integrity of the envelope of the entire building. And. I guess, you know, if we hire a roofing contractor, but it's not really the roof that's the problem, or that's not the only problem, we really haven't cured the whole problem. Or really, we really haven't protected the whole building. So. You know, it is a lot of money, but I just want to protect the entire building. And I think that maybe that's what we need to do. But I don't have any more to say.
Thank you. Linda?
Hi, thank you. Yeah, I agree with Karen also. It's not just about the roof. It's also about the waterproofing too. So I really would like to ensure that when we do spend the money, that it is that it's responsible. And I agree with Diane. I too didn't, didn't agree with hiring a consultant. I was like, you know, why are we going to spend this money? It didn't make sense. I agreed with Carolyn at that point, thinking, you know, why would we not just go right to the roofing company? But then after listening and understanding their roles, their responsibilities, holding accountability to the companies and their expertise and oversight or insight of what we may need, it gave me a whole different perspective on the whole job, actually. Because I automatically think when you hire, call a roofing company, you think there's a problem and then they're going to come in and yes, slap a roof on. This is not the idea with what these guys are coming in with their expertise. They are coming in and doing an evaluation. And I really love that all of them were talking about looking and seeing what really is a problem with us. Not anyone else, not any other school, library, building. It's what we need and only doing what we need. And that really kind of sold me on hiring one because I thought, you know what, yeah, it sounds like a lot of money and why do we want to spend it? But wow, is that money well spent? Because you could possibly spend that money and not have to get the whole. Because our building, come on, how many roofs do we have in our, we have so many different roofs. We don't have this weird one, you know, size fits all kind of. We have all these additions and so many different types of roofs. It's, you really need someone with that expertise. Anyway, I like that they're going to oversee the job and that, you know, that a few of them, or at least a couple of them, had said that they would make sure that they weren't just going to say, oh, okay, yeah, move ahead. They wanted to come out, check, make sure that they were holding their company accountable for doing exactly what they said that they were going to do. I mean, that to me really, because I mean, I wouldn't know how to do it. We wouldn't know how to do it. Dave doesn't know. I mean, that's not his expertise. I mean, he might know. He could probably look it up on YouTube or something, but come on, no. I like that they're holding the roofing company accountable. Someone overseeing that job is so important because, yes, it could be a lot of money, like Tim said, or that it's such a large project, or it could be not so large project. That's what's awesome about this. It could make it not be that large project. And we don't know, you know? It sounds like it's going to be this large amount of money, but we honestly don't know at this point. And I also thought about, as after listening to hearing what they had said, I really liked the local companies that know the reputable roofing companies out there. We have no clue who actually has done in the past. Yes, we could hear, you know, some of their recommendations or they could have a portfolio saying, oh, this company, or this building, or, I'm sorry, this school or this library liked us. But honestly, the, I believe that the consultants will know who are the good companies that work hard, work well, that do a good job and that actually do everything and have all their ducks in a row. And do a good job for Niles Library. So anyway, that's my point. I think that it's, they did sway me with their presentations. So, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Very nice. Patty?
Anything I would have said, it's already been said. Thank you very much.
You're very welcome. All right. Okay, so Susan, would you take the roll call on this?
Can I throw one more question out there?
Absolutely.
Okay, in terms of the fact that we have no major problems with the roof, okay? And it was, it was repeated by all the consultants and it's, it's been proven by our, our our patch jobs, our two patch repairs in three years. What's the rush to get involved with this right now? I mean, wouldn't it be more logical, we're not experiencing any problems? If we, if a problem should occur in the future, then go, you know, consider having someone come out and test and then go forward. But right now, I mean, in the middle of a pandemic, and I know I keep saying that, this is a very costly project, especially the way we're, we seem to be going to go about it. Why must we do it now? I mean, we have no problems with the roof. Yeah, I just want an answer. I'm just trying to understand why it's urgent that we do this now. Anyone?
Yes, Susan.
Yep. I, as director, would never wait until there was a crisis with the roof. We have very fragile collections in this building. Mr. Yasol often talks about our historic books and how valuable those are. And we certainly don't want to wait until there's a catastrophe and then respond to that. And we do have roofs that are very old. And we've been told that one of the roofs does need to be. Even, even Mr. Doughty in his, in his message at the Monday board meeting said that that roof needed to be replaced in 2020, 2021. So I don't know why we would even consider waiting to at least get the roof looked at, to get the roof analyzed and really solidly looked at with a company that would have then a path forward. So that's my thinking on it, Carolyn, is I don't want to wait until there's a disaster.
Well, no, and I don't want you to, but you know, the consultants kept saying, oh, you can get good, good repair work. You'll get another five years. So I was trying to figure out where really are we? But if one roof needs to be replaced by 2021?
Right. Well, I think that's why I'm calling it a refurbishment project. Because we get forensic analysis to tell us where it needs to be fixed, where it needs to be replaced, where it needs to be refurbished, you know, whatever. Because we don't have enough information to make that decision. And I think, I like the phased approach where they do the analysis, you know, then we make another decision. Do we move forward and what do we move forward with? We don't have enough knowledge. And I, and I, you know, a roof needs to be replaced sooner or later. You know, we don't want to wait till water's coming out. People know and people up there says we got squishy insulation. I, that's a terrible thing to hear. Linda?
Yeah, not only that, I think that just kind of, again, supports us getting a consultant because this will give us a baseline of what is needed and possibly a timeline of rather being proactive rather than being reactive, to be honest. So that also swayed me exactly what Carolyn's talking about. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all. So let's take a roll call on that motion.
Tim, would you mind repeating the motion? Because I'm not sure everybody's entirely clear on what it is, and I am not entirely.
It was written down. Oh, no.
It wasn't written? Oops.
It wasn't written down. I had said it and I'm relying on everybody's memory for it because I wrote it down.
Oh, that was a mistake.
It is a mistake. All right, so the motion is to engage a second party consultant to do the forensic analysis of the roof in order to create specifications for its refurbishment where necessary, replacement where necessary, and to monitor, and to help create the bid for consultants to do this work and to monitor the progress of those consultants as the project is going through.
Okay, thank you.
Everybody remember that.
Yeah.
Oh, that's Susan. No, no, I did not. But it's being recorded. I got more of it this time.
It's a lot.
Erin?
Karen, you're on mute?
Yes.
Thank you. Carolyn?
No.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
And Tim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right.
Can I just get one question before you move on? Your terminology, second party consultant, that's an envelope consultant?
However we refer to those three people that we listen to.
Okay, so that's what you meant. Okay, it is them, right? All right, that's fine. I thought it was something else. Okay, got it.
I don't know what they're called. I don't know.
No, no, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify. Thanks.
Thank you. Diane, you had, there was, those are good suggestions. I'm not 100% sure. Can we discuss it? I mean, it's not on the agenda.
Well, I thought this was all part of the same thing.
I don't know. Somebody, Karen, what do you think? It's, I'd love to have a discussion on these two items, but I'm not sure, since it's not on the agenda.
What, I'm sorry, what exactly was the suggestion?
Diane suggested we discuss amongst the board to come up with a direction on whether or not they have a green roof and a direction on whether or not to pursue a solar panels.
I mean, if we should even ask these companies to pursue specifications and.
I don't know. I thought we were going to choose one first. We were going to choose one and then.
I kind of agree with you. I don't want to spend money, I don't want to spend money on them making specifications for something we ultimately don't want.
Right. I was hoping that, you know, after we choose one, that we could then get some more advice from them. And maybe, you know, a green roof or a solar roof would be an option. Like when someone puts in a bid, usually they put in a regular bid and then they have some optional ones that can also give you a bid for. And so then we can decide, you know, if we want to take them, if we want to take the option or not.
Yes, Carolyn.
I think, I think it's a mistake. I think we need to clarify whether we want, so I agree with Olson, sorry, Diane, that we either need to determine we're going to go with solar panels or not, or what was the other one? Vegetation. To have somebody come out and propose specifications, it's a lot more costly needing to determine what's necessary for solar panels and where they'll be placed and all this. There's a lot of extra work. We need to be clear about what we want. We're going to need, if they're going to come out and give us a bid on a roof after identifying its condition, we need to know what they're going to do. And I think we should do that initially. I mean, if you guys want these things, I think it's, it's important to know right at the beginning and you know what your direction is. We listened to three people that gave us all this.
Yeah, I know. Karen, I need to have clarification if we can even discuss this right now, since it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, I think we can discuss anything. It's, you can't vote on something if it's not on the agenda.
And the roof is on the agenda. So, yeah, anything surrounding that topic could be discussed as an agenda item.
All right. Okay, good. I'm sorry, Carolyn, I just.
No, no, it's fine. I'm just saying, I think we need a direction. And if more people tell us more about something, we don't know if we want it. You know, I just feel like, wow, it's costly, it's time consuming.
You're breaking up.
I just think it's, I think we need to be, we need to make a decision. I think we do.
Well, I would like to know, am I muted? No, I'm not. Okay. If, you know, if it's cost effective or not. Because certainly a solar roof could pull in some money or save some costs. And, but I'd like to see the numbers. So I'd like to see whether or not that makes sense. As far as a green roof, I'd like to know how much that would cost. It probably isn't going to save us, it might save us some cost in that it deflects some of the heat from the roof. But I'd like to know just the general cost of that too. I don't think it would cost anymore. I think the, I don't know what we're calling them, envelope specialist or whatever. envelope specialist or whatever, uh, they would, uh, drop the bids and the people who bid would bid either just to do the roof or to do solar in addition to the roof or green in addition to the roof. And they could bid for that or not bid for that as they chose. Um, so, um, it wouldn't be any additional cost to us. What we would do is just decide whether or not we wanted to accept that bid or not. Doesn't cost anything for us, uh, to have someone bid to do something.
Okay, that's what I was questioning. If it was gonna be costly for us just to find out the information, but.
Well, I think there would be an additional cost.
Yeah. My, my question here is, from what I remember of them talking to us.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, a lot of it was, is our roof going to be able to support these things? Or are, is our roof gonna have to be beefed up in order to support these things? And realistically, if the roof we have now isn't beefed up enough, is it worth the extra money? I don't know that it is.
Uh, actually, Greg.
And we can't tell that until they do the analysis.
That is true. That is true. I, something I want to say about this, though, here, my opinion. Uh, the solar panels, there's a return on investment in regards to the solar panels. So it's gonna cost X amount of dollars to create the infrastructure for them and to install them. Then they're going to return through decreased electrical usage. So it's, it's a return on investment. You have to balance how much it's gonna cost to do this over how much is the decrease in future expenditures. And we may find that it's not cost effective, which is fine, then we don't do it. Or it is cost effective, which then is a decision to go ahead. And as far as the vegetable roof and the green roof, you know, I'm, I'm really, I've stated it before. I'm, I'm really against that principally because of the additional weight on the roof, the additional, um, um, supporting that'll need. And more importantly, the additional staff time that will be taken up by people having to go up and, and, and monitor and support this thing. Because we do not want members of the public, volunteers, to be going up on our roof any way, shape, or form. So then this will.
Liability.
Yeah, liability. This will put additional staff, and you know, I, I, I dislike boards who make decisions for themselves that then result in a lot of additional work on the staff and just put it on the agenda. You guys go out and take it, because you know, it's, it's gonna be real pretty. And Karen, I'm not disregarding it, you know, I'm not denigrating it. But I think it's, it's more of a vanity type project. And I'm just, myself, I, I would just vote against the, the whole green roof just from the get go. I, I, I don't like all the work and all the effort it's going to take to do that. That's my opinion. Um, I'm sorry, I did have his, his hand up on this.
I'm sorry, are you calling him?
Yeah, you had, you had to hear it.
Yeah. Um, so, um, you know, where does the additional cost, uh, come in? Um, I believe that each one of the firms would have to do, uh, an engineering study on the, um, um, on the roof support to make sure that obviously it could support the weight. Um, that's generally not something that's contemplated in their, uh, in their initial bid for the work. So there may be some extra there. Now, is it a significant amount? I couldn't tell you that one way or the other. Um, but, you know, the way I think I understand it is they would take a look at the drawings and then they would actually, um, you know, somehow stress test the drawings to make sure that they, you know, that the design is capable of, of, uh, supporting this weight. We got an indication, um, I believe it was either, uh, late in 2019 or early in 2020 from a firm called Dewberry who did, uh, this work out in countryside on the new municipal complex out there. And they came out and they walked on the roof and they looked at the drawings and, and what they came back to us with is the long north roof and the long south roof. So like the, uh, the south roof is the one that terminates in the, in the spire on the, uh, uh, near the parking lot on Oakden. And then the long, uh, stretch of roof, uh, that's basically over the boardroom and over, um, uh, over the administrative area and, and so forth, um, could support up to 80,000 kilowatt hours. Um, basically eight ninths of our, uh, annual requirement. Now, we, you know, they're not signing off on anything. It's a preliminary determination. Um, there would have to be more work to be done. Um, but, you know, what they see up there is, yeah, it's pretty likely. You know, that we could do about 80,000 kilowatt hours is, is what I understand. And, um, uh, that would go a long way to defraying our electrical costs. Um, and the payback would be pretty short. I'm sure they're not considering everything. Okay? We spend about 85 to $90,000 a year at, at the rate that we're going, uh, on electrical costs. So, you know, how long would it take to, you know, if those went to zero, how long would it take to, uh, you know, get that money back is, is kind of what the question is. And the, uh, uh, the life on those panels is, right now was somewhere between 20 and 25 years is my understanding. Um, so, I mean, that's just a little bit of additional information. But I think there would be some initial costs, uh, associated with make, you know, ascertaining exactly what the roof could support. The vegetative roof is, is a bit tricky here because the, uh, uh, the load, uh, from, you know, the trays or however this is constructed and, and set on the roof is just incredible. And the, the most likely place that, you know, we would put it is on the sloped roof that's in between the, you know, it's the lower part of the facade that, you know, kind of terminates into the, uh, parking lot, uh, so that people could see it. Uh, otherwise it would be up in the air and, you know, too far for anybody to observe or anything like that. Um, and the, and the truss roof that's under that does not look like it can support. It would, you know, probably be some pretty significant changes to it. Um, and, you know, and that's where they left it. Um, they really didn't talk about it further. So, you know, in some respects, you know, you can say, yeah, we got a roof right here where we can support it and therefore we should do it because the benefits are there. Um, but I think once you start making major modifications to the, uh, to the underlying structure, I think your costs start to, you know, escalate and the, um, and the benefits start to erode pretty significantly, um, if you get in, you know, if you get into that.
Yes, Carolyn.
I just wanted to mention on Monday, when we listened to the consultants, two of them did comment on solar panels and vegetation. Um, as far as the vegetation, they mentioned that it would be problematic and maintenance was costly. So I mean, that, and I, and that's exactly what you said, Tim. But as far as the solar panels, remember, um, I think it was Karen who questioned one of the consultants about a, um, what is it, a, a resident who mentioned, um, that they would become outdated. And he did, he did state that the solar panel circuits and storage would quickly become outdated, which is something then that what do we, that we're gonna have to consider? What do we do with it? Or, you know, although the solar panels last 25 years, but if everything else is outdated in a few years, I mean, we're talking cost.
Yeah, that's an issue.
You know, so I, I don't know. This sounds so iffy. But anyway, I just wanted to remind you that, that that's what the consultant said.
All right. Uh, anybody else have any thoughts on this? All right. So I guess what I'd like to do is get a consensus. Let's, in my opinion, I think we should get, we should ask when they do their analysis to give us their, uh, thoughts and recommendations and, and, um, costs associated with the solar panels. Because that is, um, money generator, you know, and then, and it's, and it's, it's, there, there will be a period where we will recover the cost and a period where we will, um, then start generating income from it. In light, but in light of the comparisons about the infrastructure and about the components possibly being, um, um, outdated. Maybe we go the route where we create the infrastructure on the roof for possible solar panels in the future. So there's that, uh, slice of it as well. So let's just, let's have a, um, a consensus vote on solar. And let's just, let's just parcel it out, solar panels and vegetation. Let's have a consensus on the solar panels. Yes, Carolyn?
One quick question. How, how can we, um, ascertain the, um, time it'll take for us to recoup or to, uh, to save money on solar panels? Who does that study or where do we, I mean, I, I didn't, didn't we have a study? Or, or did someone tell us that there are only 67 Sundays in Chicago? I mean, aren't there some statistics out there already?
Sundays in Chicago.
Pardon me?
Aren't there 52 Sundays in Chicago?
No, sunny day, 67 in a year, I was told.
I was, I was trying to be.
Oh, okay. No, but anyway, is there somehow we could find this out?
I think that would be part of the analysis of whether or not to do it.
Oh, one, okay.
We don't have the information.
Tim? What I do remember is he said the type of technology in the solar panels at this time, he actually mentioned a new type of technology that, uh, process that will be in the solar panels in just a matter of years. Uh, which is something, if it's even discussed, we need to discuss and figure out from this, these roofing people what, because are we gonna put in something that is outdated in a short period of time?
Okay. So the, the question that I think is relevant, do we want to have our consultants pursue the, the, uh, design necess, necessary for solar panels or not? Let's, let's just decide if we want to pursue it or we don't want to pursue it. What do you think, Diane?
If there's a, a price leading cost to this, I don't want to pursue it. I mean.
Well, we don't know.
Yeah, we don't know, but.
So do we, the question.
It could be an option. I guess it could be an option and only if it was not costly just investigating.
I understand. That's the end, that is the end decision. The question is, do you, as a trustee, want a contractor to come up with specifications and result in the cost for solar so that we can make a decision on it? That's really all I want to do.
No, I'd say, I'd say no at this time.
Okay, thank you. And I, I'm, I'm gonna say yes, I'd like to see what the return on investment for solar would be. Carolyn, what do you, what do you think?
I'm gonna say no because I think I already read a study about return on investment. But I think right now is not the time to go in, and go into solar panels.
Thank you. Good. Karen, what do you think on the solar panels?
Um, yeah, I'd like to look into it. I'd like to see whether or not we can save money and whether or not we can actually save taxpayers' money in the long run by investigating solar. Um, after we investigate it, and I think we, you know, want to do a fair and full investigation, uh, we may or may not want to go with it. And if we decide we want to go with it, then I think that we want to put those specifications in as an option for roofers to bid on that. And it, actually, when I say roofers, I don't know that it's usually gonna be a roofer that would install it. Probably is a separate company that would do it, which makes another reason why we need an envelope specialist because it probably would be a separate contractor. But, I mean, this is certainly a good time to look into it in the sense that you want to put solar panels on after you've recently replaced your roof. I mean, you don't want to put them on just before you need a roof replaced because that's really gonna cause more expensive trouble. So this is the time to look into it. And I think, uh, having a consultant is good, too, because the solar contractors are often separate, or I think usually separate companies.
Nice. All right, we're at two to two. Patty, what do you think?
I personally think that, okay, fine, it's okay to investigate it, but it's a moot point if they tell us our roof would be fine with just repairs and it would last for five years. If they say it'll last for five years, six years, there again, why should we put solar panels on it?
Patty, I'm gonna stop you.
That's why I'm not.
I know. The question, the question is specifically,
I don't know.
Do we have the people investigate solar or not? That's really all we're trying to decide.
I understand.
And then do you have?
I have no opinion.
You have no opinion?
I do have an opinion, but you don't want to hear it.
Well, I, I hear, but you, but you didn't answer whether or not we have them investigate it. You went further past.
I want to know what they think about the roof in general and its condition before we get it investigated about the solar panels.
Okay, so you're a no. Are you a no or a yes?
I guess if that means no or a no.
Well, I don't want to put words in your mouth. I'm, I, we have to.
By God, everybody else does.
No, we have to tell these people what we want them to investigate. I mean, it's just, it's a pretty simple.
How, how about if, I mean, I think maybe the question should be asked, if, if the roofer, if the consultant says we need a new roof, do you want them to investigate solar?
That's a different story.
And again, I would agree, if, if the consultant, if the envelope consultant comes back and says, you don't need a new roof, well, then, or you don't need a new roof for five years, then I would say now is not the time to put solar on. Because if we're gonna have to rip off the roof five years from now, that would be the time to put solar on, not now. So I think if the question is asked, if the consultant says we need a new roof at this time, would you want the consultant to tell us whether or not solar panels would be cost effective?
Okay, yes. But not if we don't need a roof at this time.
I agree.
I agree with that, too. Linda, do you have any thoughts on this one?
Linda, you're on mute.
You're on mute, Linda.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi. Yes, I would like to, um, get the cost of solar panels.
All right. Well, that was nice. All right. So we'll, we'll lean towards asking the contractors to, uh, uh, consider solar panels should we need a new roof in the section, or sections that will accommodate that installation. Okay, nice. Okay, second point is the vegetable or green roof solution. And it's the same question, do we have the contractors look into infrastructure changes in order to support that, again, should we need a new roof? Um, and my, uh, opinion on this is no, because I, uh, specifically don't want.
You're breaking up.
Oh, sorry. My, uh, my answer to this is no. Uh, more specifically because I, I just don't want to add first the additional cost for it. Uh, I don't think it's gonna give us anything in return on, on, on cost. And I specifically don't want to add to the staff's responsibilities for taking care of this. God forbid we go through all this cost and, you know, it's five, two years from now, we've got a bunch of weeds up there and a bunch of dead plants, whatever. You know, a bunch of, uh, you know, willow trees grow in my gutters every, because of the seeds coming. Well, um, not willow trees, uh, maple trees, right? And I don't want maple trees growing up on the roof, right? We got all kinds of problems. Birds' nests, you know, whatever. Uh, I think it, it adds to a whole level of problems that, you know, the staff is, the staff is to be running the library, not gardening. And, and, and we don't want volunteers up there. But this is my opinion. You know, I'm, I'm rarely that strong on anything, as you probably know. But this is, this is when I'm strong. So, uh, let's, Karen, this was your idea, so why don't we start with you?
Yeah, you know, I, I just say that I worked downtown and when you look at buildings in the loop, there are a lot of buildings that have green roofs on town. that have green roofs on top of them. And these are commercial buildings. They do it only if it's, you know, cost effective to do it. They're not doing it just for fun. And there are no, people are not up there gardening. They plant it with seedum or something that needs very little maintenance or no maintenance. And I tried it on my own roof. I put a flat on my own roof to see if it would survive there for an entire year, and it did without me ever once walking out on the roof. So I think you might think it needs more maintenance than it actually will. They're designed not to have it need any maintenance. But I don't know that I'm going to convince you. I think it's a good idea. I would like to see it. But, you know, again, I think it would be a great look for our library and would be wonderful for cutting down heating costs. Probably not as much as putting solar panels in. It does cut down on heating costs somewhat, but that's my opinion, not it.
Very nice. Patty?
After what was said by those consultants, I would say no. Because like you said, Tim, we might have to have employees up there taking care of it, weeding, whatever. I don't know. Solar panels is one thing. I'm not convinced on the green roof.
Yeah, thank you. Linda? Linda, you're muted. Linda? Should we call 911?
Hi, did you ask me something?
Yes, I asked you if you had an opinion on whether or not we should pursue any specifications for a green roof.
My voice was down. Can you say that again?
Do you have an opinion on whether or not the board should seek specifications from our contractor on installing a green roof? Again, should we need a new roof?
No, I disagree. I'm not interested. It sounded from all three that it was very expensive and that was worried about the weight and maintaining was also a big expense. So, thank you.
You're welcome. And Diane?
Yeah, I'm trying to figure out the purpose of a green roof. I mean, nobody has ever said, except for their own satisfaction, of having it. I don't understand its purpose. I mean, it would look cool, but I don't think we need to spend the money like that. So no.
All right. Carolyn?
It's going to be another no. It has a lot of drawbacks, you know, especially as we heard from the consultants. So no, it's not something I'm for. Thanks.
Very welcome. Okay. So we have a clear consensus. We are going to ask our consultants, should we find that we need a new roof in the areas that would sustain solar, to give us their opinions and their specifications and their cost estimates on solar, but not on green roofs? All right? Are we all, we all good? We're all clear?
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome. Very good meeting. Thank you. Sorry, Karen. All right. So does anybody have any other other? Any other? I have no other in the other. Nope.
Did we decide in vote on?
We didn't vote on which one?
Vote on which one?
Yeah.
I'm hearing a second.
I had said that we had asked them to come back with more specific costs for each phase.
Okay. No, I thought you had that now. I thought this is.
No, we just had them.
Maybe you got it, you know, you had it for us or something. Greg was going to do us a little presentation right now.
Unfortunately, you're probably.
I'm anxious to vote on this.
Yeah, I know.
It's the song and dance, huh?
I imagine we're going to have to have, unfortunately, have to have another special meeting where we do get that information so that we can, again, you know, consider it and come to a decision.
We're not going to pick a specific company?
We are.
Yeah. For info on money.
Hold on, Carolyn. Diane? No, we're not choosing a specific company.
Tonight, tonight, we're not doing that.
Oh, we're not? All right. Carolyn?
If possible, when you schedule another special meeting, could it not be a day before a board meeting?
That's a good idea.
It was two days. It was two days.
I felt like, I woke up yesterday and I said, tomorrow's a meeting?
Not the same week.
I'm sorry. You know, the problem with the roof refreshment is that time is ticking and our window.
No, I get it. It's fine.
All right. Is there any other other?
Yes.
Yes, Pat?
I have two that I've been thinking about quite a bit. I would like to know if we could get, we, the board members, can get a list of the cost it takes to fill out the FOIA's. I'm curious. Because I know we get a lot of FOIA's and I'm curious what it costs for them to be, the work to be done. I saw the one from Mr. McCula and he paid 170 some dollars for it, which was cool. But, you know, I'm just curious.
Susan, is that something that's easily ascertained?
Well, I have gotten five FOIA requests from two people over the last two days. So this is a good time to look at that. I have already spent several hours on one of them. So, yeah, I mean, I think it is worth looking at. Greg and I actually even debated whether we should ask you to increase the legal line for this year because we went over a little bit last year partly because of that. And so, yeah, I mean, I think it's worth saying. But the fact is that however much it costs, citizens have a right to ask these questions.
And I'm not saying that. But if our legal budget needs to be increased, and believe me, I see how many FOIA's are coming in, maybe that's something that needs to be done. Because we need to protect, you know, you need to talk to those people.
You know, I think it might be worthwhile to break out that cost so that taxpayers can see how much money the district has to spend on FOIA responses.
Yeah. As being an open organization, public should be aware of what's going on with that.
Transparency.
Transparency. Thank you, Diane. I was looking for the word.
We can do that.
Okay. Eddie, you had a second one?
Yes. This one might be a little touchier.
I don't know.
But this is one that I've been thinking about for a long time. And I'm tired of being quiet about it, so I'm going to voice it.
Go, girl.
I feel since we give residents a time limit when they can talk for so much time, I think we should give board members a time limit on a subject and then let other board members talk and then they can come back to it. But not to just go on for an hour and a half on one thing. I think it's fair to the other board members. I think it's something we should consider.
So what I would suggest, then, is that you look at our board procedures for what we have agreed as our board to discuss topics and that you make a motion as to what you feel a change should be in regard to this topic. So that then we can have a regular discussion about it and it would be open to the public as well. So if you want to put that on for next month's agenda, I am more.
Fine. I don't know how it would be worded, though, but I think we should say, okay, when you are asked to talk or you are talking, you're only allowed to talk for, say, three minutes until another person can talk. Then after everybody is done talking, if you want to say something else, you can say it. But not just go on and on and on and not let anybody else talk.
Again, just the way you worded it, with the wording in that, make a motion to change it and we'll have our go around and we'll discuss it.
And then we can discuss it. If it has to be a motion first.
Yes. How we should approach that.
Fine, then let's please put it on the agenda. Because I think this is something that's really been getting on my last nerve.
Your last nerve? Holy cats.
Yes. So what is this figure?
Oh, yeah.
This figure, see? It's not the middle one.
All right. That'll be an agenda item for next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yes.
I'm moved.
Great.
Second.
Melissa and Karen second. All right. Thank you. Susan, can I have a roll call?
Karen?
Yes.
Carolyn?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Patty?
Yes.
Linda?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
All right.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. This was a great meeting. Appreciate it all.
Thank you. We'll get to the next one.
Thank you all. Bye-bye.
It's nice to be leaving at nine.
Yes, I know.
What about our next meeting? Are you just going to send out an email about the next meeting?
Of a special board meeting for the next?
Yeah.
Yeah, when we get information that is able for us to.
Okay, all right. Just, we need plenty of notice, that's all.
I'm with you.
We're still going to be on these Zooms for a while?
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
All right. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.